Are you waving to?
Frank.
CNN.
She said it, so I do, but I was like, she's awake. Can't tell what time it is because that clock is three minutes.
Seven thirty-two.
Okay. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty-two PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Thibodeau will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here, I've been here a long time.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Sennett.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Alderman O'Brien is under the weather, so that's why he is not here this evening. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchess and Corporation Counsel Steve Volton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. So the first thing I wanted to discuss is the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget, which is on your desks. This, first, the first thing you may notice about it is that the presentation has improved considerably. We're trying to make it more accessible, more readable by members of the public and members of the Board of Aldermen, more understandable. If you recall back a few years ago what it used to be with no explanation, no, uh, no, none of the detail that's provided or none of the analysis that's provided within the budget here, within the budget book, you will see, I believe, a very significant improvement. And for that improvement and for the preparation work on the budget itself, I'd like to thank Megan Karen from my office, John Griffin, and Tim Cummings, all of whom worked very considerably to get this to you tonight. In terms of an overview, the budget is up 3.7%. The challenges that exist, the main, the biggest challenge that existed was, or that exists, is the increase in medical care for city employees, which is up $4.6 million. This is a thirteen to fourteen percent increase. We, in talking with our consultants on healthcare, have learned that this is typical. In fact, I think Manchester is up sixteen or eighteen percent, so healthcare is definitely, continues to be a, you know, a significant expense and a significant challenge for municipal budgets, I think, across New Hampshire. I thought I would mention a couple of items. Certainly, the Budget Committee, and I understand the review starts on Thursday night, will get into many of the details. In the Fire Department, we made a couple of changes. We first, we added money to the Fire Department budget to provide periodic, regular cancer screenings and health and physicals for firefighters on a broader basis than exists now. This would cover the entire workforce as opposed to simply the specialty units, which is the custom right now. The purpose for this is that, the reason for this, is that statistics and just experience shows that firefighters face a more higher risk for various health, serious health problems such as cancer and other diseases. So this will help to detect those type of health problems at an early stage in an effort to make sure that they can be corrected or maximize the chance that they can be corrected before they get too serious. But we did, there was a significant, the Fire Commission proposed that the, some of the top positions in the Fire Department receive raises over and above what the normal ordinance would permit. We are in the middle of a salary study covering all the non-union, the so-called exempt positions across city government. And rather than grant those very significant raises, we thought we would, we should wait until the salary study comes in, which will look at municipalities in our region and before making any decisions to significantly change compensation for any non-union exempt employees. So there was a cut there, but overall, we added to the budget, I think, because we put in the healthcare. They also added a captain, which was proposed and is passed along in my budget. We added some civilian personnel in the Police Department at their request to help with prosecutions and other duties that they have. We increased, or continued using this budget, the social worker in the Leah Elliott in the Police Department, which is something that they have been very happy with in terms of helping to diffuse some non-criminal situations where mental health or other distress is involved, so we continued that. Those are some of the details in the budget, but overall, the budget is up 3.7%, and going back to the beginning, the major challenge was the, is the increase in the healthcare costs, for the medical costs. I also wanted to mention a couple other resolutions that are on tonight's agenda, Madam President. R-24039, I believe, is the resolution which would create a bonding plan. We discussed this in some detail at the Personnel Committee, but would create a plan suggesting a limitation of $30 million per year maximum over the next five years. The purpose for this is, of course, that, as we've discussed before, that the projects that, the worthwhile projects that have been proposed in various, across the city, the amount of those projects greatly exceeds what we believe we can afford in terms of borrowing and then paying back principal and interest. So this would limit the expenditure, or the bonding to $30 million a year. And as we discussed in the Personnel Committee, this is a plan, it could be, it could be varied, if it was 32 million one year and 28 million the next. I mean, the point is, we're trying to create a structure for thinking about how to approach the capital projects. And of course, you, Madam President, and I, as approved by the Board of Aldermen, have this ad hoc capital debt committee. We're looking at all the projects and will be making some recommendations regarding priorities across these various projects. Madam President, I also wanted to mention R-24053, which is the development agreement for the Mohawk Tannery. Again, this has been discussed many times, but we have reached a, an agreement with the EPA. They're contributing considerably to the cleanup of the former Mohawk Tannery site. We have a developer who will contribute to the cleanup costs as well and will develop housing on the site, both rental and condominiums for sale. This will include the creation of affordable housing units in the rental section and a, I think it's $2.3 million contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help on the ownership side. This was endorsed unanimously by the Finance Committee, and I hope that you will proceed with approval of that development agreement so that we can begin to clean up this polluted site that has existed there for the forty years since the tannery closed. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that we have Dawn Enright here. Dawn Ms. Enright is currently the treasure tax collector for the city of Concord, has previously worked for the city of Nashville for quite a while, as well as the Town of Derry. And I've nominated her for the position of treasure tax collector to succeed Mr. Griffin, beginning in a couple of weeks. Mr. Griffin will be retiring soon, although we will bring him back on a part-time basis to help with the, our transition with Ms. Enright and just to assist with the financial issues for a period, a temporary period of time. But Ms. Enright was endorsed unanimously by the Personnel Committee. As I said before, I don't think we could find a person in New Hampshire who is more qualified than the, for this position than the treasure tax collector of our next largest city, that being Concord. So we, so I highly endorse her, and I thank the Personnel Committee for endorsing her as well. And I hope you will approve her tonight, and she's here to be sworn in, I presume. Finally, Madam President, I do have to leave early tonight, and so I, in a few minutes, I will have to depart, which I apologize for, but I don't think you, if you need me for any questions or anything, I would ask that you simply ask them now. And other than that, I just wish you a good evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor, I'll start over here. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I just want to thank the mayor and his team. Past years, I always had them give me a three-ring binder with a notebook. This year, I asked that the entire Budget Committee get a three-ring binder to make it easier to go through the process, so, and also the formatting is much better than it's been, so thank you for all that, Mayor.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Recognition period. Reading minutes in previous meetings, there being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of April ninth, April twenty-second, and April twenty-third, 2024, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa Foto, Director of Public Works, regarding referral from Board of Public Works, R-24-035. Communication has been received from Sam Delfi, Planning Manager, regarding fiscal year 25 Capital Improvements Program, Planning Board Recommendation. Communication has been received from Sam Delfi, Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R-24-036, relative to easements for the Riverfront Project. Communication has been received from Sam Delfi, Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R-24-053, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Blaylock Holding LLC. Communication has been received from Lisa Foto, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Aldermen, R-24-041, R-24-042, R-24-046. Communication has been received from Jill Stansfield, Parking Manager, regarding communication relative to increasing fees and fines in the parking ordinance.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Public period, period for public comment relative to items to be acted upon this evening. We have no one qualified, signed up to speak. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award ChemServe Environmental Analysis.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve a three-year contract with Chem Serve Environmental Analyst of Milford, New Hampshire, for water quality testing services at Nashua landfill sites for the solid waste department in an amount not to exceed $300,000. Funding will be through the department, 168 Solid Waste Fund, 55699, other contracted services, general fund.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award North Coast Services LLC.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve a three-year contract between the city of Nashua and North Coast Services LLC of Concord, New Hampshire, for the processing and disposal of universal wastes in the amount not to exceed $225,000, that's $75,000 a year. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, 55699, other contracted services/ general fund.
You've heard that motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award OnDust Mechanical and Appliance LLC.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract between the city of Nashua and OnDust Mechanical and Appliance LLC of Merrimack, New Hampshire, for refrigerant recovery, CFCs, services at the Nashua Recycling Center in the amount not to exceed $60,000, $20,000 annually. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, 55699, other contracted services, general fund.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award Windfield Alloy.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve a three-year contract between the city of Nashua and Windfall Alloy Incorporated of Atkinson, New Hampshire, for the recycling of scrap metal at the Four Hills Landfill, pending approval of the FY25 operating budget. Revenue generated is $360,000, that's $120,000 per year. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, 44289, sale of recyclables.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Doria Brown, Energy Manager, regarding natural gas supply rate.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to accept, place on file, and approve the reduction of the natural gas rate from eight dollars and, wow, eight dollars point, eight point one five, let's go there, per decatherm to 7.6 per decatherm. The revised rates will take effect in December twenty eighth, twenty fourth through November twenty twenty-six.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Business and Industrial Development Authority, Derek D. Gagden, new appointment, term to expire May twenty-eighth, 2027, 172 Marsh Road, Pelham, New Hampshire, 03076. Conservation Commission, Robert L. Pinsonalts, new alternate appointment, term to expire May twenty-eighth, 2027, 9 Bangcriff Street, Apartment nine, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Greeley Park Advisory Committee, Allison Gallipou, new appointment, term to expire May fourteenth, 2027, 131 Colgate Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board, Angela M. Spillio's, reappointment, term to expire September thirtieth, 2025, 6 N. Pepperell Road, Hollis, New Hampshire, 03049. Zoning Board, Joseph J. Patri, new appointment, term to expire May twenty-eighth, 2027, 233 Cannon Gate 3 Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March twenty-fifth, 2024, and the April twenty-second, 2024 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April first Personnel, April first, 2024 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April eighth, 2024 Joint Meeting of Planning and Economic Development Committee and Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April tenth, 2024 Penachuk Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April fifteenth, 2024 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April seventeenth, 2024 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will declare the report of the April twenty-fourth, 2024 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Board of assessors.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Charles Dobbins, 47 Dogwood Drive, Unit 20, Nashua, to the Board of Assessors. Is Mr. Dobbins here this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Lon Holberger, 5 Wellesley Road, Nashua, with a term to expire April ninth, 2027. Is Mr. Holberger here? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Nashua Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Lindsay Rinaldi, 705 Belmont Street, Belmont, Mass., with a term to expire April first, 2027. Lindsay, I don't see her here this evening, she will be sworn in at a later date. Nash, go ahead, sorry.
Nashua Riverfront Tiff Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Eric Drewart, 52 Main Street, Unit 206, Nashua, with a term to expire September thirtieth, 2025. Is Mr. Drewart here this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Treasurer Tax Collector.
There being no objection, I will confirm Dawn Enright, 16 Chase Road, London, Derry, New Hampshire, to the position of treasurer tax collector with an indefinite term. And I know Ms. Enright is here, would you please come up and take the oath of office?
Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you soundly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as treasurer tax collector of the city of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Unfinished business resolutions. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table R-24022.
Motion is to remove R-24022 from the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Third reading of R-24-022, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for fiscal year 2025.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to amend R-22, I'm sorry, R-24022, by placing with the golden rod copy of amendments that were made at the Human Affairs Committee.
The motion is to amend with the golden rod copy. Could you give us a brief summary of what the amendments are?
Yeah, we had to make adjustments to the different dispositions of how much we were allocating because we didn't know exactly what money we would get yet. So it's kind of part of the process is first we have to open it, have the public hearing and all the information, and then we have to adjust as we go.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for a final passage of R-24022 as amended.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2422 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-24-033, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to move to strike from the agenda as posted on the city of Nashua website, the language "Board of Health with unfavorable recommendation." I'd like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. After consultation with my colleague Alderman Clemmons, review of the minutes of the Board of Health, and the review of the meetings themselves, the Board of Health did not take a formal vote and transmit that vote to the Board of Aldermen. They did have an informal discussion where they were in agreement that they didn't support the recommendation, but a formal vote was not taken. And in the spirit of transparency, I think it is important that it be reflected as such on a publicly posted agenda.
Is there a motion there?
Yes, to strike.
To strike, okay. You've heard the motion. Alderman Thibodeau.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to know why that ended up on the, why it ended up like that? Like, why was it, like, who did that and why? If anyone knows. I'm just curious why someone would put they had it unfavorable if it wasn't, in fact, an unfavorable.
Yes.
Because I had called up over at the Division of Public Health, and I, first of all, I looked at their minutes to see what it was, and it just said discussion, there was no motion. So I called up, Director Bagley was on vacation. So then I reached out to one of the committee members and was told that it was, they did not agree with the two members. And where we referred it to that committee, I, or to that board, I needed to put something on the agenda so that at least it was discussed.
Okay. Madam President, through you to Ms. Graham, and the member verified they didn't take a vote.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
So you heard the motion. The motion is to strike. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. So I will make it, I will schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2024.
Oh, Madam President, I still have to make the next motion.
Yeah, there's one more.
There's one more, okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Madam President, give me one second to find the language from Corporation Counsel. Yes, I would like to make a motion that Art. 24-033 is necessary in scheduling of a new properly noticed public hearing following the public hearing, the transmission of the resolution to the city clerk who shall then follow the required notification actions of the resolution. And if I could speak to that motion.
Alderman Moran.
There was some, I hate doing this, but Alderman Jetty, very fine, detailed person, pointed out some technical errors in the legislation, and we also didn't follow the process in regards to transmitting the, oh, Alderman, oh, not Alderman, Corporation Counsel.
There was no error in the drafting of the legislation.
Okay. The process wasn't followed, is that...
That's correct.
Is that okay? All right. The process wasn't followed appropriately, and we missed the timeframe to transmit the information to the city clerk within seven days. So I'm asking that we start essentially over from scratch so we can have a public hearing and then transmit the information to the city clerk within that timeframe. And then the city clerk has a timeframe to follow to transmit that to the Secretary of State and the other duly authorized departments.
Alderman Lopez.
Through the President to the maker of the motion, when you say start from scratch, you mean for the public hearing, or you mean we have to vote on whether it's necessary, referred to committee and all that? Or do you mean just a public hearing?
No, we have to start it all over.
Okay.
We missed the vote.
Okay. Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a piece of legislation I haven't been for from the beginning, mostly because from what I've heard is the Board of Health isn't for it, whether it's been a formal vote or not. You know, we have a great Board of Health, they do a great job here. You know, I don't see where something's broken, so why add? And so if we're adding, I was thinking, well, if, you know, even five isn't, if we're looking just to make a bigger board, then five's not enough. If we're looking for specific specialties, why those two and not thinking about other ones? You know, I was really thinking hard today if I should amend this and add, why not a clinical oncologist? A lot of us are dealing with cancer issues. I also think about a pharmacist, because they deal with health when it comes to medicine. We could add a lot of different specialties that could really add to the Board of Health. So I've really been thinking about amending this and adding two more. But since we're starting over and since it has to go to public hearing, I would like to hear from the Board of, the people who are on the Board of Health, I was hoping, you know, we could hear from them, because I want to know why they're against it. And when people tell me, well, it's just because it's the way it is, and that, you know, they want to keep control with the three, I want to hear from them. Like, give me a good reason why it should stay three. That's what I want to hear. And I haven't yet heard it. I mean, I obviously know why Alderman Moran wants it to change, but I don't know why they don't want it to change. So I would like to hear that from them at some point. And I know a couple of them spoke out committee, but the things they've said haven't convinced me. I did look at Manchester's Board of Health today, and I did see that they have five committee members, one being a nurse. I don't think there was a specific social worker spot, but there was a nurse on there. So I don't know, maybe it's a good idea or not. I'm going to let it go through, I'm not going to amend it tonight, and I'll vote for it to go to the public hearing, and we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I would just note at the public hearing that we did hold, but unfortunately did not follow the process for a charter amendment. I believe that a member of the Public Health, the President of the Board of Public Health listed exactly the reasons that the former speaker mentioned as why he was opposed to it, that he didn't want to make it too big, he didn't want to add a number of, he basically suggested that if we add one medical specialty, then we would be adding all of them. And this was discussed in the committee when we favorably, we recommended final passage for it.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. I was at one of the meetings, because I did speak out against it at one of the meetings, and I said the same thing. Why don't we add all kinds of different specialties? Why, why just these two? I mean, we could ask an infectious disease doctor. I mean, there's a bunch of different things we could add that would make it a better conversation amongst the medical community, whether it's a doctor, a social worker, RN, pharmacist, whatever. I mean, we could make this, you know, Board of 20 if we wanted to. You know, I think one of the reasons I heard was with three, you know, one's out, is really, you know, how are you going to vote on something? And, you know, it didn't make sense to have it so small, so let's make it bigger, but why these specialties? And I did hear the people, the person that came, and I don't know if it was Dr. Storres or the other doctor, and I heard that exact thing, but to me, that wasn't a good enough reason, as far as the, they don't want to make it too big, because three is awfully small. You know, it doesn't take much to not have a quorum there. So, you know, I don't buy that reason. I want a little bit more background from the Board of Health if they want to actually keep it at three.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the, I paraphrase my own words, I guess, but at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, we did talk about that slippery slope red hearing type of thing. One of the conversations around it was, you know, oncologists, right? Orthopedics, et cetera. What is it that they all went to? Just like internal medicine that's on the board, and just like pediatrician that's on the board, they went to medical school. They have that foundation of their physician career, and then they diverge into a specialty. And the research presented at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, it's the foundations that informs them on how they make their decisions. Because you might need to go to oncologist for cancer-related aspects, but it might be the ED physician who notices it, because they all have that foundation training and understanding of the body to make those specialty referrals. Much like a social worker has that foundation training and experience to make referrals to their specialists, because there's also specialists within social work, and the same thing with registered nurses, there's also specialists within the nursing system. That's why you have that foundation license, where if you really look at, you know, it's not a licensed physician, but we're asking for a licensed registered nurse and licensed social worker. But it's the foundation is what we're gearing at, because we know how to refer within the healthcare system to the specialists based on our foundation training in the field.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, as we go through this process, essentially, I call it the end of the road, but ultimately, if the Board of Aldermen approves this, then it goes on the ballot, correct? And then the people decide? Is that the ultimate, is that where this ultimately ends up if we keep approving it? And then the electorate decides what happens, correct?
I would defer to Attorney Bolton.
That's correct.
Okay.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. I would think that all people that are in medicine don't necessarily go to medical school, like a pharmacist, right? I don't know if they go through, what their training is, I don't know what it is. Or physical therapist, or, you know, obviously not exactly the same. And obviously, we have a dentist on the board, I doubt he had the same kind of training as an oncologist. I could be wrong there, but obviously, I don't know it that well. But, you know, at the end of the day, I did say I would support it today. You know, it's, I mean, we could put everything on the ballot, just let, we don't have to vote on anything here, we could just put everything on the ballot. Why us vote, right? Let the people vote, you know? Because somebody said today, we should have the barriers on the ballot. Well, let's put everything on the ballot. Why are we here? We could save $9,000 per person and just put everything on the ballot, right? That would be kind of chaotic, because, you know, you got people voting who aren't actually paying attention to some of this stuff, and, or the conversations that we're having today. And that's when it gets, could be dangerous depending on what the ballot item might be, right? You know, I didn't like the fact that I had a state rep kind of bully me into trying to vote for this, and I thought that was a little, and I know you didn't have anything to do with that, or anybody here had anything to do with it, but, like, nobody tells me how to vote, I vote on my own, and we've all seen that here, I voted against, and four things that nobody else is voting for or against. Sometimes I'm on the losing side by a lot. So I will support it tonight, because I, since we're starting over, I'll let it go to public hearing and see what the public have to say about it, I'm willing to listen, so.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, thank you. Just to the previous speaker, in regards to some of the comments about it being on the ballot, we have to put this on the ballot, we don't have a choice, because it's a charter change. So it's not something that we're making, you know, if it were up to me, it wouldn't be on the ballot. I think this board is capable of making that decision itself. But nevertheless, you change the City Charter, that's how we do it, and this is a change to the City Charter. So therefore, it goes to the people to have the final say. That's how our charter is enacted. So, so it, you know, it's kind of a red herring to say, well, why don't we put everything on the ballot? Because we don't do that generally. It has to be either relative to the charter, or I would say a very exceptional circumstance.
Could you, Mr. Clerk, read the amendment, or the motion?
Would you like to restate it?
You could restate it.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that Art. 24-033 is necessary in scheduling of a new properly noticed public hearing is needed following the public hearing, transmittal of the resolution to the city clerk who shall then follow the required notification actions of the resolution.
Okay, so a positive vote would be that it is necessary, negative vote would be that it is not necessary. Are you looking for a roll call vote?
Through you to Corporation Counsel, does this need to be roll called?
It's not required, but anyone can ask for it.
Voice votes, fine.
Okay.
Can I ask for a roll call?
You can ask for a roll call.
Just want to make sure we get a...
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just want to say that no time was mentioned for the public hearing, and we have a Board of Aldermen meeting at night at 7:30.
It says on here, May 28, on the agenda.
Not a disbursement, though.
Oh.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the resolution to be scheduled.
What time?
I think the president is going to make that announcement if this passes.
All right. How about your weight?
Okay, so the, there has been a roll call requested. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jetty.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and we will schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, with further discussion and disposition at the Board of Aldermen meeting following thereafter. So we will hold this meeting prior to our next full board meeting.
7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Second reading of Art. 24-035, changing the purpose of up to $2,200,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the design and construction of a Division of Public Works office facility to the design of a Public Works Division garage.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of Art. 24-035 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49, I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
We in the past have always had concerns about going to the process of getting a bond funded and then doing the plan for whatever the project is, and then hiring a construction manager to do it, and then the bond doesn't end up being the correct amount. In this instance, we have monies left over from the building of the DPW Building, Office Building. The bond has already been sold, so the money can be transferred to a similar project. And in this instance, it would be for the planning of a new garage, which has had discussions in the Ad-Hoc Committee and Capital Improvements Committee extensively. And what this would do would allow us to get a plan for the building and have it ready to go. If we get the plan now, we could probably do it for this amount of money. If we wait, it's definitely going to be more than that. So I, with this new procedure of trying to get bonds closer to their actual required value, this makes sense, that we can get that building designed. I think the only question on this building is whether or not, when, it'll be built. But if we have all the plans, we're ready to go, and can then, at that point, whenever it is, hire a construction manager and get the final pricing and do a much bond closer to the actual amount.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. I am torn on this. I feel like I would like to hear a discussion around potentially tabling it, because the Ad-Hoc Committee is supposed to be coming back with a list of priorities based on the bonding plan, which we're also going to have in front of us in a couple of motions. And my concern is if we put $2.5 million into a design, we're now making sure that that's going to be on that list. You guys decide differently, now we put that money into a design that's going to be put on the shelf for, you know, X number of years. So I think if it's not a very time-sensitive thing, it wouldn't be a bad thing to put it on the table for now, have the Ad-Hoc have that discussion, and then come back to it. I'm not making the motion yet, because I want to allow people to have some discussion around it, but I'm happy to if people agree.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, through you to the previous speaker, did you get a chance to speak to Director Foto about that?
Not yet.
I tend to, I tend to agree with that approach. I'll leave it at that, but, I mean, we're not supposed to really debate tabling, but I'll leave it at that.
There's no motion yet. Motion, there's no motion to allow for the debate first. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, I sponsored this, but then, before I could watch the Ad-Hoc meeting, I read the article from the Nashua Inklink about the ask for a homeless shelter, and I'm saying it would go to a homeless shelter, but then I watched the meeting, and I saw all the other projects that were being presented. And I'm, of course, focused on the homeless shelter being more important than anything else. That was a little bit facetious, too, so don't take it as anything other than that. But I think it is a good idea to potentially tread slowly when there are already some very decent projects being presented, and it's not necessarily a we need to rush kind of thing.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. So at the beginning of this legislation, I sat down with Director Foto and Lauren Byers at DPW to talk about this money here. And that was one of the things I brought up with them, was the Ad-Hoc Committee on the bonding. And I straight up told them, I can't guarantee you that's even on my list for the next five years, and they seem to be aware that that would potentially be the situation. So I'm not too, too concerned solely because, like, I asked them, because that was one of my concerns as well, is if we do this now, does this handcuff us? Are you expecting that I put this in next year's capital, or the year after? And their answer was, well, that would be up to the commission members.
Alderman Clemmons.
Madam President, motion to table Art. 24-35.
The motion is to table Art. 24-035.
Will you do by roll call?
By roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Goveya.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jetty.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
No.
Alderman Klee.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Eight yeas, six nays.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of R. dash twenty-four dash zero three-six, relative to easements for the Riverfront project.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-four zero three-six.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, and Resolution twenty-four thirty-six is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. dash twenty-four dash zero three-nine, supporting a limited five-year bonding plan.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-four oh thirty-nine.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, but I would like to, um, say something about it. And that is that, that, uh, you know, this, um, this resolution, um, you know, you know, supporting a limited five-year bonding plan. You know, the resolution, you know, was, uh, you know, suggested by the mayor. Uh, the mayor wants to, um, try to get a handle on the, the bonding that we're doing. Because as he pointed out, he, he's afraid that the, uh, that the, you know, expenses of, um, of the bonding and the interest, et cetera, you know, may end up with a, a burden too heavy for the taxpayers. And, and I applaud that, that thought. You know, it, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think that, you know, it's, it's happened, I, I think, too many times where, you know, we adopt a budget, and then, um, during the year, different things come up. And, um, you know, they all, you know, they're, they're great, they're great projects. You know, they seem, um, you know, really necessary, and things that we ought to do. And we all, you know, agree that it's something that we ought to do, and the only way to pay for it is to borrow the money. And before, you know, before we know it, you know, the bonding keeps increasing. Uh, so, so, you know, this, I think, is, um, you know, I was on the, uh, Capital Improvements Plan Committee, and, um, you know, I, I saw that, uh, you know, projects, um, you know, came up after, you know, the, the meetings that the, uh, committee had. And, um, you know, something, you know, there'd be a special meeting called so that we, that we could, uh, you know, uh, rate the project. And, uh, I remember during one meeting, uh, we were told, it, you know, they, they rate these projects, you know, A, B, C. And I remember being told, well, it doesn't really matter how you rate it. But there's, uh, you know, in order to get the bond, we, we have to demonstrate that it was rated. And it could be a C project, but it, you know, if the administration feels that that project is important, it, it jumps ahead of the A projects. So I was a little discouraged about, you know, what role the Capital Improvements Committee was really playing. And, um, so, you know, those, those things have happened. And, uh, you know, I think this is, you know, a good thing. It's, it's an attempt to try to get control over that. But, you know, this is, uh, this is, you know, really truly not binding. You know, we could, you know, a project could come up, and we really need it, and we could vote to go ahead with the project in spite of this resolution. But the resolution is a good idea, it's a good planning tool, and that, that's why I, I'm supporting it. You know, it, it's like when you, you know, homeowners, you know, well, let me say, you know, the burden on the taxpayers, um, you know, I have to say that the tax rate in Nashua is not unreasonable. When you look at the tax rate, you know, the tax rate in Nashua is somewhere in the middle of, of communities in the state. There are a lot of communities that have a much higher tax rate. There are some that have a lower, but not many. Um, so our tax rate is not out of control. You know, the recent reevaluation, you know, because it shifted the burden more to the residential's than the commercial properties, because the value of commercial properties has gone down. You know, that resulted, you know, a lot of people getting a higher tax bill. But it, it really wasn't because of the ta, you know, the budget was, was not the problem. The, the, the problem was the, you know, the, the burden of that, that budget being, you know, how it's shared among commercial and residential taxpayers. You know, the, the real problem with the tax burden on our homeowners, you know, has to do with the state. Because the state continually passes down to the cities and towns, you know, the burden of government. The towns, the cities and towns are limited as to what revenue we, we can get. We're limited to basically the, uh, the property tax. And the state, you know, the state has the business profits tax, the business enterprise tax. You know, they have, uh, the, the interest and dividends tax. And those taxes, generally speaking, you know, create a, a larger burden among more people who are better able to afford those taxes than our homeowners can. But the state keeps cutting those taxes. And they're planning on eliminating the interest and dividends tax, which is really a tax on people who have a lot of money. And the, so the burden of, of, of running the state and all the governments, all the cities and towns, you know, keeps falling more and more on, on the, uh, homeowners, the property, real estate property owners. And even the education, you know, the Supreme Court said that education, providing an adequate education was a responsibility of the state. So what did the state do? The state said, okay, we're going to have a statewide property tax. So when you look at your homeowners, when you look at your tax bill, you look, you'll see there's a portion of the tax bill is for the statewide property tax. That's the state's way of paying for education. So it's still being paid by, you know, the, the local property owners. So that, that's the real problem with the tax burden that our property owners are having. Having said all of that, I think this is a step in the right direction, and I'm going to support it. But in order to achieve tax equity, there's a lot more work to be done. And I think work has to be done by the state. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I, I agree that, um, trying to get a handle on, on bonding is a good idea. And originally, my concern with this legislation was that it was, um, so solid that you, it couldn't be modified. And I thought that if, if an emergency came up and we had to bond something, not only would we have to pass the bonding resolution, but we'd also have to override this. And after talking to the mayor, that's not true. This is a plan. And if an emergency comes up and we have to bond something else, we can. And if we can, we could possibly shift another project later. So there's some flexibility. So I think it's a good idea to, to get a handle on, on capital spending. And so I'm going to support this. And, and I think, based on everything I've heard about this legislation, I think it's, uh, worthy to pass. The ad hoc committee is, is looking at projects right now. We have more projects than we can fund to meet this goal. But we can also plan over five years. And it seems in the past, we were always planning for the next six months to a year, and not thinking about the future. This helps us get locked into the future.
Alderman Kelly.
Uh, thank you. I had, uh, similar concerns around what happens here, and I pushed it through from committee, because I think generally getting a good sense of what we are going to plan to spend makes sense. What I'm concerned about, and I wanted to ask potentially through you to Corporation Counsel, is the wording of it, I had that same reaction in our conversation at the, um, committee around, does this tie our hands? And the wording is, it says, you know, to support the attached general fund document, which limits bonding. So did we consider softening it? Because I'm concerned that what's going to happen is it's going to get in front of good governments. We have a huge thing that we have to adjust. I think Alderman Clemmons said something like, well, what if we only spend twenty the first year? And then the next year, there's something that comes up that's really big that has to actually be fixed. Are we going to start getting into almost a spending cap scenario where we might be liable from a legally, legal standpoint, um, to this document? A little long question.
It's a general rule of legislative governance that a legislative body cannot tie its own hands or the hands of its successors. So you cannot pass something that says, oh, successors cannot override it, or repeal it, or retract it. So I, I, I don't think you have that concern. The only exception would be where you get a third party, uh, having a vested interest. So when you approve a contract, third party is the other contracting party. Well, the city is then bound to the terms of the contract. Similarly, with, uh, a bonded debt, you're bound to the terms of that essentially loan to repay it. But this doesn't do any of those things. So yes, it is, you can ignore it, you can repeal it. I don't think that's a big concern.
Alderman Moran.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would just say, I think it's a very good idea to get on a, a bonding plan. Uh, you know, we can't control what happens at the state. No matter what party you are, you know, what is going on up there is insane. So, and they keep shifting down the cost to us. So we have to be the grownups in the room and have to make decisions about tightening our belts and making sure that we don't overspend or, um, and find projects that are the best value for, um, the residents of the city. That's why I want to support this. And just to Alderman Jettie's point, I mean, they're getting rid of the interest and dividends tax. We all know who that helps. I paid four dollars in that tax last year, and I think I'm doing okay. They're giving multimillionaire billionaires breaks up, and they're getting rid of this extra revenue. And that eighty million plus, or whatever it was, is going to be shifted down to us at some point. So we really have to get ahead of the ball on how much money we're going to be spending, uh, because it's just going to come back to us anyways. We're going to get less and less, because some very well-off people convinced some certain folks up at the State House that they didn't want to pay their, their share.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, through the President to, um, Alderman Dowd, as in his role as Chair of these two committees, I think this is germane to. Um, it's my understanding that, you know, when we have bonds, we have to use that money specifically for what the bond's original purpose was. But there's a limited degree of leeway where, I mean, for example, tonight, we contemplated adjusting the application of a bond from, uh, an office building to a, a garage for vehicles. Um, so to that end, I know at least, um, DeBroski Parkway, there are additional, like, secondary projects. Does the description of all of the debt service we currently hold accurately reflect all the sub-projects that have been done? Um, because we've been focusing a lot on what we're planning to do over the next five years, and I don't know if we're doing a, as good a job as we could be of explaining what we've done over the past five years or, or more with bonding.
Alderman Dowd.
That's a multifaceted question. And, uh, I'm going to say something, and perhaps the treasurer can chime in, too. You can, it, it, it all depends on whether, on a project, whether the bond is sold or not sold. An example, the DPW building has money left over. The bond's already been sold. But because of the people that bought the bond, you have to allocate that to something similar, related. So in this case, adding the, the maintenance building to the site, which is sort of in the plan from day one, uh, would fit into that category. So you could spend that money for the plans for the new building. If you wanted to take that money from, from that project and allocate it to, uh, the public health building they want to build, no. I don't think you can. And again, I'll, the treasurer is still here.
He's gone.
I don't think you can do that. Uh, and it has to do with the rules of bonding. In the case of the McCarthy School, the ten million that we approved some time ago, it, it, it had, the bond has not been sold. So let's hypothetically say, I think it's going to be more than this, but I'm not going to go out on a limb until I, I have the key to that building. Right now, we're, we know we're not using two million of that ten million, and probably much more. So because the bond's not sold, we just won't sell the bond to that ten million value. That, you, you can't use money that hasn't been bonded. So that could offset another project only by the fact that we're not bonding for that project. But you can't, you know, you couldn't arbitrarily say, okay, well, hey, you got money in that bond, let's, uh, you know, build something else that's not related to schools. No, that, that won't work. The bonding is very, very limited in what you can do. And it's a complex thing. I spent many years with treasurer for debt going over bonding and, and, uh, so you, you have to be careful. It's only allowed, you can only do certain things with certain types of money. If it's bonded and we have the money now, we can use it to something related. If we haven't sold the bond, we can't use that money on any other project, because it doesn't exist. We just won't sell the bond to that value. I hope that answers most of your question. Um, in, in this instance, uh, with the legislation we're talking about right now, uh, it's, it's a good thing, because it is flexible, and according to the mayor and his philosophy, and, oh, and Mr. Griffin, who's the treasurer, um, it, it's, it's, uh, former treasurer, I guess, now, um, you, you'll plan what makes up that thirty million dollars. And in discussions with the mayor and Mr. Griffin, if, if, if this year, we have so many projects, it goes to thirty-two, next year it's twenty-eight. As long as we stick to the plan of thirty million a year for five years, it's a five-year resolution, we're fine. Um, and the ad hoc committee has to determine what constitutes that thirty million dollars in FY twenty-five. We have some money from schools that's in that part of the thirty million. We have other legislation we're going to be passing, and I want to get into it, that's going to be authorizing bonding that won't be spent till twenty-seven to thirty-one. That should not count against the thirty million in, in FY twenty-five, even though we might pass it in twenty-four. This is not going to be spent then. And the biggest concern is not necessarily how much we're bonding every year. The biggest concern is what's the debt service? The debt service is the amount of money that's in the budget that we're paying off, capital projects. So it's, it's a little complex, and I think the other night when we added, uh, asked Director Cummings to come up with that plan, that's critical as to how you come up with that thirty million. Hope that answered your question.
I mean, I think I have a little more nuance, but maybe I'll save it for the budget when we talk about debt service.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, I'm, I'm all set, Madam President, thank you.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution twenty-four thirty-nine, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-four thirty-nine is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. dash twenty-four dash zero four-one, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed three million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the city's sewer infrastructure improvement in sewer and drain casting replacement programs.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion for final passage of R-24041, and like to speak with briefly.
Alderman Dowd?
We've had extensive discussions on this relative to the work that has to be done. We're under, you know, federal guidelines, and these are projects that need to be accomplished, and, and they've been explained in very minute detail by the DPW, so I hope that this passes easily.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, to, just to further that, this and the next resolution, they're bonds, but they're not general obligation bonds, so they don't count towards that 30 million. These are paid for by fees, the sewer fees. So I just want the public to know that difference.
Alderman Sullivan, can I have your hand up?
I did, uh, thank you. I, um, it was, it was my understanding when I initially read this resolution that these bonds were general obligation funds, um, and that the bonds would be sold in fiscal year. It, it says here in the analysis, this resolution authorizes the city to issue and sell general obligation bonds up to 3.75 million for the sewer infrastructure. And the reason I wanted to bring that up was because in the resolution that we just passed, we're at 28.5 on bonding, on bonding, and this puts us over the $30 million.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, my, my understanding, and I, and I asked this question, I believe at the Finance Committee meeting, was that these, and the answer I got was that these were being paid for by fee dollars and not taxpayer dollars. But I don't know if, through you to Attorney Bolton, if he knows the answer to that for sure.
Well, you're correct and you're incorrect. They are being paid out of the wastewater Enterprise Fund, which is funded by the wastewater fees. But they are also general obligation bonds. So if we defaulted on that, presumably we would pay out of other available funds. But that's certainly not the plan.
You all set? Alderman Sullivan?
I'm just not seeing that in the resolution. I'm sorry. If I, if I missed it, please point it out to me. I'm just not seeing it there.
I don't think it has to be in the resolution. But the funding source will be through the Enterprise Fund. I think that's what Alderman Clemmons was told, and that's my understanding of the plan and how it's, how it's essentially budgeted. But it doesn't have to say that. The authorizing resolution is for general obligation bonds. Doesn't say they'll be paid out of tax dollars or where they'll be paid.
I'd like to make a motion to table until we figure this out.
Motion is, sorry?
Roll call.
Motion is to table. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Senate?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Klee?
No.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Wiltshire?
No.
Six yays, eight nays.
That motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage. Further discussion, Alderman Thibodeau?
Thanks, Madam President. I mean, just one quick point. I mean, how do we vote on this if we don't know what's right? So, I mean, it is a pretty big difference whether it's part of the bonding or if it's, it's not. So, and we got two people saying, well, we got people saying different things. So, I mean. Eden?
We have our attorney here who is giving us the advice that we, we sought from him.
All right.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, again, we're getting into the concern of, of the bond amount rather than the debt service. We have other general obligation bonds that are being paid by another source of income. Remember, we had that long discussion about the, the dams and the money, the revenue coming from the dams paying off the bonds. That doesn't count against the 30 million where it's coming out, the, the debt service is coming out of tax dollars. It's, it's, I mean, you could say it's ultimately coming out of somebody's pocket, but it's being covered by a source of income to pay off the bond debt service that's not in this budget book per se as a general obligation bond. So it's the debt service, and the debt service is being paid in this instance by fees. And so it's not showing up in debt service for, like, school buildings or, or other types of projects.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, and, and to further that, you know, we have other bonds like the, the TIF bonds that are paid for by the tax increment financing of the district from which they are being used that are not paid for by the rest of the taxpayers in Nashua. So we, we do this quite often, and I've been on the board long enough to know that anytime we have a bond related to the sewer, it's paid for by the sewer fees.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage.
One other quick thing. I'm pretty sure that these, this bonding needs to get taken care of because they need to start doing the work. They only get to do this work during the summer months, and now that the weather is, especially today, has turned to the, the good side, they need to get working on this because they do this work every year. They take a section they have to do and do this work.
Motion is for final passage. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2441 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-042, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $925,143 for various wastewater capital improvements.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for final passage of R-24042.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2442. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2442 is declared duly adopted. Alderman Lopez?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, make sure I know everyone, to remove from the table R-24022. I'm sorry, I did the wrong, what even I looked at? I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table R-24043.
You've heard the motion. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Third reading of R-24-043, approving the annual action plan for the community development block grant, CDVG, in home investment partnership, home programs for fiscal year 2025.
Alderman Lopez?
So for clarification, I'd like to make a motion for a final passage.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion.
This is, I'm sorry.
Alderman Lopez?
This is just the second part of what we did earlier, and it's part of HUD's, HUD has a very formal structured process of, you have to make your plan, you have to have your plan approved, you have to present it to the public, then you have to make sure HUD actually gives you enough money to do the plan, then amend your plan, show the public, and then approve it. But now we actually have to give authorization to enact the plan.
Alderman Jettie?
I'm all set.
You're all set. Okay. The motion is for final passage of Resolution 2440, no, 2443. Alderman Thibodeau?
Just for clarity, so the other CDVG was to approve the requesting. This is to approve the plan that we made in the committee.
So in the plan, we had a Plan A, which was what we thought we were gonna get and all of the allocations we made. And then the actual amount came in, the adjustments were made according to the Plan B we had, which I don't think was really necessary, actually. And then now that we've approved the plan, now we have to give permission to actually give the money to different agencies, fund the different departments and all that.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2443 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-045, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended transportation alternatives program, federal aid project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of upgrading sidewalks and creating bicycle lanes on Lock Street and Whitney Street, and to accept and appropriate an additional $24,309.81 for the projects.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24045 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Klee?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. This is a, a project that's been near and dear to my heart since I became an alderman. It was in 2018, we applied for this grant. We were approved for the grant, and it was to widen the sidewalks on Whitney and, and Lock Street. It also allows for a bike lane. It was part of the, I think the TAP program is, is what it's called, but it was the safe school, safe routes to school. It was a variety, it does not do the paving or change of the street, but it is for, for that particular thing. I, I really hope that you will look in favor of this. Additional monies have had to be given. It was granted in 2018. COVID came along, kind of delayed things, and now we're here in 2024, and we're finally able to start this project. And a lot of things have happened, so I think it's important that we approve it. This is from the day one, has been an 80/20, where we get 80% from the state and we have to kick in 20%.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, thank you. Just, I wholeheartedly support this and would love to see more of this around the city as we get up, be able to have transportation alternatives in walkable cities. It helps with energy and environment.
Further discussion. Alderman Moran?
Yeah, I would just ask all the bikers out there to refrain from becoming bikers like they are in Cambridge. Those guys are very aggressive, but I don't think that happens here in Nashua.
Further discussion. Alderman Thibodeau?
Just point of clarity, so the, the 80/20 funds, so that was from the state or from the federal?
Alderman Klee?
It, it's a, it's a state grant. I, I have a feeling that it comes in from the federal to the state, but it's a, it, we apply to, to the state. How the state is, is, is funded, I'm not quite sure on this one, but we work through the state. The state has to release the funds and so on. I do believe there's a federal component in it, but I think we work with the state. It comes in from the federal to the, to the state. But don't quote me on that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Klee?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
14 yays, 0 nays.
Motion carries, and Resolution 2445 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-046, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $700,000 for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department for Hills Landfill.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24046.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2446 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-053, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Blaylock Holdings LLC.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-24-053, and would like to speak to the motion.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you. So this plan came through the Finance Committee and got unanimous approval. I would suggest anybody, if you have questions on that project, they gave a really good presentation, and also the document itself is very informative. Tells you a lot about timelines and when they'll be actually working on it. So a lot of questions answered there for anybody in the public who lives in the area or thinks they could potentially be impacted. That's a great starting point reference.
Alderman Moran?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I echo the comments from my colleague from Ward 1, and also want to highlight that Director Cummings did make a point to state that the contribution to the trust fund, the housing trust fund, would be looked at for a project regarding building of housing that has Section 8 components for lower to moderate income versus the current 80% of the median income.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think this plan is really thorough, and I am excited to support it. I think this is a long time coming, and I imagine I'm not gonna steal Alderman Clemmons' fire here because I know he grew up in the neighborhood, but I've been hearing about this parcel since I became an alderman. This has been a lot of people working together to make sure we can finally clean this up and put some housing that we so very much need in the city.
Alderman Klee?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and I, and I hope that I don't take from Alderman Clemmons. But, but I, I did want to say that for as, as long as, you know, the last number of years, this has been in negotiation, and one of the biggest things is the capping of the lagoons there and so on, and I'm sure Alderman Clemmons will speak to that. But what I want, what I wanted to mention to this is that there was a lot of negotiating and give and take. It wasn't just like one side got everything. The reason why it's taken so long to go from committee to committee to coming to here and so on for us to actually come to an agreement is because there's been a lot of, no, you can't have that, well, I want this. And one of the things that is gonna come out of it, and while the city in the end will be paying for it, is that bridge that goes from that neighborhood across to Mine Falls, which is something that's been on the city's plan for a long time. While Blaylock will be, the developer will be building it, the city will pay for it, and it's gonna cost us a lot less because it's part of their project. And I made it very clear in the Finance Committee, if suddenly the cost for that goes up, are we now on the hook for the extra? And the answer was nope. This is the agreement. This is all we're paying for it. So if everything goes up. The other thing as part of that agreement is that they're going to keep it clean from snow and sun. Any major needs to that, to that bridge will be taken care of by the city, as it will be a city bridge. But they're going to do some small repairs, painting and so on. So I think it really is a, a great, and I agree with what my colleague from Ward 1 had said. Please watch the presentation. It was very precise, and I think we asked a lot of questions to, to clarify things. So, and I'll stop there.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so I, I didn't directly grow up in the neighborhood. However, I had, my grandparents lived on Fairmont Heights, and a lot of my aunts and uncles lived in Little Florida growing up, and, you know, I, I can remember the tannery always being this place that my relatives warned me, you know, don't go into the tannery, don't go over there because it was a toxic mess. And the, the amount of people in my family who are affected by cancer and things like that, who lived in, in that neighborhood and did grow up in that neighborhood, is significant. And, and there's a lot of other people who, who were from there with the same issue. And you have to wonder, you know, is, is it because of the tannery and the things that they were doing there? I think common sense would, would lead you to that. So for this- you to that. So for this to come, to finally come to fruition, I think is a, is a great thing. I mean, I, being on the Board of Aldermen for as long as I have, I can remember having discussions with the previous mayor about different things that could be done, like removing the soil, bringing that out. And there was always a roadblock. There was always something that was in the way of that getting done. You know, mostly it was because of the cost to the taxpayers. And what, what I think is the best part of this agreement is the fact that it's costing the taxpayers very little money, if not anything, really. We're waiving, we're waiving the back taxes, which in reality, we would never see anyway. And the, the other portion of it is that while we're giving them a loan from the housing trust fund, that's going to be paid back. So, you know, I look at all of these things. I look at the fact that the EPA finally has come around to, to agreeing to clean this up. We need more housing in Nashua, you know, and we're going to get that out of it. Some of it is going to be affordable, maybe not to the degree that, that some of us would like. But again, that comes with a trade-off, because remember, they're cleaning up a toxic mess. So the fact that we're getting any affordable housing in there i- is truly a testament to Director Cummings, Director Sullivan, the mayor, everybody else who has negotiated this deal. This, to me, in, of all the things that I have been a part of on this Board of Aldermen, this is the biggest achievement. This is a win-win-win. It's a win for the neighborhood, it's a win for the developer, and it's a win for the entire city, for our future. So for all of those reasons, I'm supporting this, and I hope everybody here will. It's a wonderful plan, and I'm happy to finally see it come to fruition.
Alderman Lopez.
So the very first day that I was an alderman, right after, well, before I was sworn in, but after I won my election, my first election, I was approached by Sandy Belknap, a resident in the Fairmont Street area, and she said this was, this was what we needed to do. And this was an important project. She told me about the history of the neighbors who'd been trying for twenty years to get a superfund site cleaned up that never was allowed on the superfund list. And she talked at length about the health issues that were happening, the kids that were, you know, setting up bike ramps, jumping over open cesspools of carcinogens, you know, all the horror stories. And my thought at that time was, okay, so I was like kind of focusing on the inner-city, not gentrification part. I didn't know I was like accepting a superfund site, and it seemed completely unapproachable. But it was one of the first things I talked to Mayor Donches about. It was the first thing I talked about Director Marshant about. There was very strong support from both. And it took years and a lot of, a lot of annual neighborhood watch meetings where the question was, what are you guys doing about the tannery? And we didn't know if there would be a buyer. We knew that it would have to be somebody from the private sector who could do it, because the city can't buy a piece of land and then spend hundreds of millions, if not more, to remediate it. And during the initial stages of this, it looked impossible to clean up. You know, I, we had the environmental advocates coming in, talking about how we needed to complete removal, and how we needed to build a digester on the site. And these were the ways to properly do this. And the expenses were astronomical. Like, I had a company call me from Canada that said, hey, we do the exact thing you guys are talking about, and this is what it would cost, and we're definitely telling you, don't try that. It took someone with vision. It took a developer who was committed to the, to the project and also to the neighborhoods around it. And I think Blaylock has turned out to be that. They've really worked to engage the community, then the neighbors, the neighbors who had a lot of very righteous concerns, because they're going to live right on the property. You don't just disturb a bunch of contaminants without making sure everyone around knows how they're going to be affected, without making sure there's going to be monitoring. And as was mentioned by previous speakers, it started to look like there was, like, the opportunities unfolding, the EPA was coming and, you know, contributing at least organizational support at that time to try to get, engage neighbors and having those public hearings. And then the pandemic hit, and really would have been an opportunity for most developers to walk away and say, all right, I'm going to go find something easier or simpler. But that's not what happened. The Blaylock stuck with it. Bernie personally engaged the neighbors repeatedly. He kept looking for new plans. He kept pursuing new funding. And he presented the city with a vision of what we could do with a site that has, over the years, really been, you know, not just abandoned, but misused. I know Public Health and I were working on outreach to different homeless encampments there over the years, and there was a lot of them. A guy built a whole cabin in there and then was furious when someone else burned it down. And like, that property needs eyes on it. It needs people living in it. It needs, it needs life. And I think what's being proposed is a program that will respect the green space, respect the environmental access. It will provide greater access by the, for the existing neighbors and the future neighbors to Mine Falls. It has a lot of strengths. And then as a bonus, the extra revenue being put back into the housing trust fund is actually going to be used for low-income and, and, you know, Section eight types of housings, I believe. As a sidebar, it's my understanding also that that's kind of an unfortunate byproduct of how public housing is being transitioned. So I think we can expect some pushback on how that project actually unfolds on the other side. But as far as this project is done, and doing something about cleaning up an environmental toxic waste that the original owners just abandoned, we've done something amazing, and something that I think nationally can be looked at as, as a model. Like, how did you manage to do this without the big government coming in and cleaning everything up? We managed to build a consensus from many, many, many partners, starting with the neighbors. So I'm supporting this project as well. I'm looking forward to each step in its, its, its development. And of course, we're receptive to the concerns of residents as they unfold. You know, we don't want billions of trucks driving through in the middle of the night, and we want to make sure that the construction is done in a respectful way. But it is, as Alderman Clemmons said, one of the most important things any of us can do as a board for the future of our city, to clean this up and to put something there that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to enter into a master development agreement with Blaylock Holdings. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four fifty-three is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
New business resolutions.
First reading of our dash twenty-four dash zero five four, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024 Relative to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Housing Improvements and Rental Improvements Programs.
Additional sponsors. Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sennett, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of our dash twenty-four dash zero five five, relative to the transfer of thirty-one thousand from the Department 161 Street Department Account 51300, overtime to Department 177 Parks and Recreation Account 54280, Building Grounds Maintenance, eleven thousand, and Account 71623 Park Equipment, twenty thousand.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of our dash twenty-four dash zero five six, dissolving the Housing Expendable Trust Fund, establishing a housing revolving fund, and transferring funds into the housing revolving fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Cleese, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. Without objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the introduction of Resolution twenty-four fifty-seven that was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of our dash twenty-four dash zero five seven, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 Proposed Budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Additional sponsors. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June seventeenth, 2024, at 7:00 PM at Nashua High School North Auditorium. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one four, increasing fees and fines in the parking ordinances.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Govea, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Sennett, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Thibodeau, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one five, changing references to the housing trust fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderwoman Timmons, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. We have six speakers signed up, and you have a three-minute time limit. Our first speaker is Nicholas Scolera. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello again, Board. My name is Nicholas Scolera from Two Paddington Place here in Nashua. I'm here once again to urge you, the Board of Aldermen in Mayor Nashua, to write, endorse, and pass a resolution in support of an immediate and lasting ceasefire in Gaza. For seven months now, we have been faced with the glaringly heinous and bloodthirsty nature of the military-industrial complex and its subsidiaries. In an industry so objectively evil, even the unabashed warhawk President Eisenhower was cautious of its control over the American economy and political theater. But today, we are being told to see it as a tool for liberation, a lever that can be pulled to bring democracy and strong Western values as a tool for liberation, all across the ocean, to quell the barbaric hordes. I for one don't agree that this is a viable long-term strategy, especially when the people receiving these munitions are doing great evils with them, evils that directly contradict American as well as international law. For weeks, we, we who have believed in peace and justice have been forced to listen to you. This board wring your hands and bemoan about violence and virtue signal about wanting a solution. To be frank, I don't think many of you actually want peace. Last time I was here, I read a passage from MLK's Letter from a Birmingham Jail, where he critiqued the form of peace that many of you espouse, a negative peace, a peace merely defined by the absence of tension. I ask you again, would you have been silent about South African apartheid or during Jim Crow? To be silent in the face of injustice is one of humanity's greatest ills. It is an ill that rears its ugly head whenever a movement questions the status quo. Many of you have made it quite clear that you don't want us here. I respond again with a question of my own. Would you have made MLK feel unwelcome, or Nelson Mandela? Should they have stopped their advocacy because it wasn't a local issue? The audacity of some, be it here on a large, or a larger platform, to equate the protest to genocide to the genocide itself is beyond insulting. We have students here in our state being brutalized on college campuses for simply demanding their university not put their endowments funded by the students' tuition dollars into firms profiting off of genocide. The chair of the Jewish Studies Department at Dartmouth, herself Jewish, was thrown to the ground and violently arrested by police in riot gear. She has been banned from campus for six months. Please tell me again which side of these protests is anti-Semitic.
One minute.
When we think back to the fight against South African apartheid or Jim Crow, which do we see as the greater evil? The sit-ins at segregated diner counters, or the systemic racism itself? I think the answer is clear, but as soon as it is about Palestine, then it gets complicated and you have to be nuanced. The sit-ins were illegal, too. Rosa Parks was a criminal. Do we praise the Montgomery Police Department for keeping order on the streets like many have praised the NYPD and New Hampshire State Police? Many of you sitting here on this board were vocal proponents of the Black Lives Matter movement and the subsequent protests in 2020, as I was. BLM New Hampshire has unequivocally sided with the students and victims of the gross brutality seen in our state and in our country. If it wasn't before, I hope it is now clear to all of you that this is a local issue. Outside of the fact that countless police departments across the country get training directly from the Israeli military, the status quo of our political discourse is a side with authority. If that were to be our heuristic for history, all of you would be on the side of George Wallace and Strom Thurmond, not MLK or Rosa Parks. You are on the side of oppression, oppression, and brutality. I ask you all to look yourselves in the mirror and ask if that is what you want to be remembered as. I know I wouldn't want to be. Thank you.
Colby Labrie.
Hello, Colby Labrie, Paris, on 106 Gilson Road, Ashwin, New Hampshire. There's a lot, has happened since the last time I was here. The time-honored tradition of student protests have been all over the headlines and flooding news feeds. Most of the hosts from the major stations are siding with another American tradition, suppression of those protests. I'm incredibly heartened by these students in New Hampshire that are, and beyond, who are putting their degrees and careers on the line for people most have never met. In time, I believe history books will refer to them with admiration. I ask you folks tonight not to admire, but to show support to the root of the cause by passing a ceasefire resolution. There's been a lot of focus on those opposed to the protests who feel unsafe, which is fair, and bound to happen whenever protests happen. It's shifting focus away from the elephant in the room. A report by the Euromed Human Rights Monitor says on January seventeenth, the Israeli military detonated three hundred and fifteen mines to destroy the Gaza Strip's last standing university, Israel University, south of Gaza City. I'm sure a lot of them wish that they could just be protesting on their campus. We have come here multiple times to explain the need and the importance of a city ceasefire resolution, and I expect we will continue to do so. So I will see you next time. Thank you for your time.
Margaret St. Louis.
Hello, I'm Margaret. I live at 106 Gilson Road. In lieu of the Board not presenting a resolution, we have requested, we've drafted our own, and I'd like to submit some prints out for distribution. If that's okay?
You can hand it to Alderman Clemmons.
I'll read that for you now, though. We urgently request you, please bring this to a vote as soon as possible. Whereas, the Board of Aldermen recognizes that all human life is precious regardless of race, religion, nationality, or nationality. Whereas, since the Hamas attack of October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Israel has engaged in disproportionate and indiscriminate military companion against the people of Gaza, which has killed at least thirty-four thousand Palestinians, seventy percent of whom, women are, of whom are women and children. And whereas, the Israeli military's companion of bombardment, siege, and invasion in Gaza has resulted in the displacement of more than eighty-five thousand of Gaza's two-point-two million in, in, anyway, destroyed more than seventy percent of homes and severely damaged nearly every healthcare facility in Gaza. And whereas, the Israeli military's campaign of bombardment, siege, and invasion in Gaza is funded in large by part of U.S. taxes in the form of unconditional military aid packages. And whereas, through their federal taxes, Nashua residents contribute more than one-point-three million dollars per year to the Israeli military. And whereas, rendering Gaza uninhabitable likely amounts to collective punishment under Article thirty-three of the Fourth Convention.
One minute.
And to genocide under the United Nations Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. And whereas, residents of Nashua City refuse to be complicit in Israel's campaign of destruction in Gaza through any partnership or investment the city may have with companies or organizations who profit from the genocide. Or where, and whereas, the City of Nashua's federal representative delegation led by Annie Custard, Maggie Hassan, and Jean Shaheen have failed to represent the urgent humanitarian and diplomatic interest of residents of the, of Nashua, the City of Nashua, New Hampshire. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nashua Board of Aldermen joins with representatives of other New Hampshire cities in calling on our president and our federal representatives, delegations to demand an immediate and enduring ceasefire, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza.
Your time is up.
The release of all hostages, detainees, and political prisoners on both sides.
Thank you. Fred Thibault.
My name is Fred Thibault. I reside at twenty-four Cheyenne Drive. Between thirteen and fifteen February nineteen forty-five, the Americans and the Brits, with thirteen hundred heavy bombers, dropped four thousand tons of high explosive bombs and incendiary devices on the city of Dresden in Germany. The bombings and the resulting firestorm destroyed more than sixteen hundred The bombings and the resulting firestorm destroyed more than sixteen hundred acres of the city, and twenty-five thousand people were killed. On August sixth, nineteen forty-five, the United States dropped an atomic bomb, fifteen thousand tons of TNT, on Hiroshima, which had a population of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and had ultimately killed a hundred and forty thousand people, a hundred and forty thousand. On August the ninth, the United States dropped a atomic bomb of twenty-one thousand tons of TNT in Nagasaki, community of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, about twice as city of Nashua. Seventy-four thousand people were killed, many due to radiation poisoning. There were no demonstrations, there were no warnings, there were no airdrop leaflets, there was no evacuation. Japan surrendered on fifteenth August nineteen forty-five, six days after the dropping of the bomb on Nagasaki. Now let's talk about Israel. On October seventh, over one thousand one hundred Israelis were killed and over one hundred hostages were taken by Hamas terrorists. Compared with the U. S. population of three hundred and thirty-three million in the U. S. versus nine-point-five million in the state of Israel, this would scale to forty thousand Americans killed and three thousand five hundred hostages taken. What do you think America would do if they had a similar terrorist attack? The pro-Palestinian demonstrators in this room should ask for an immediate surrender of Hamas as opposed to a ceasefire or ceasefire resolution, the same as Germany and Japan did, surrender and end of World War Two. Thank you.
Bill Ferrero.
My name is Bill Ferrio. My home was at number thirty-five Indian Rock Road. So a few weeks back, there was a special meeting that was held, and the subject was the troubling trend of high outside legal costs. So it was a very important subject, important enough to have a special meeting, and important enough for a very lengthy slide presentation to be created. So a couple of days after that, I sent email to the presenter, asked to see the slides, because they were not posted on the city's website at that time. It seemed like a very trivial, simple request. So a few days later, I got a response, but it was not from the present presenter. It was from Mr. Perrin, the records administrator, telling me that my request, my trivial request, had been turned into a right to know. I just wanted to see the nine slides that were presented at that public meeting, and I didn't see them on the city's website because they weren't there at that time. I didn't ask for a right to know. We get told all the time about the troubling costs of right-to-know requests. Why would my simple request become a right-to-know? Seems kind of hypocritical. I asked to see the nine slides that were presented at this public meeting a couple of days ago to talk about outside legal costs, and it gets turned into a right-to-know. It could have been responded to with a couple of clicks, click, click, send. That's all that was necessary. So anyway, the response I got, I got a letter, a very lengthy letter that was created, two-page letter. There was a letter, so this letter said, said many things. One of the things it said was, "The city's record administrator conducted a reasonable search." I mean, that's bizarre. There was no search required. These slides are probably sitting on the presenter's laptop in the folder called Recent Files.
One minute.
And then this letter, it was addressed to me, and it was CC'd to the Legal Department, CC'd to Director Cummings, and what looks like a right-to-know depositor as well. In addition to the letter, the email that was sent to me told me I had to go into a shared site, create an account just to see these nine slides. The email didn't just go to me, it went, again, to Mr. Cummings, to the Legal Department again, to the mayor's office.
Thirty seconds.
To Risk Management, and to someone in the clerk's office. I only wanted to see the nine slides that were presented in a public meeting about troubling costs. How much was spent on this process, slapping my request around, forwarding it to six or eight people, and doing the supposed reasonable search? Why is the city so hypocritical and litigious about a simple request? The nine slides included a spreadsheet that talked about the different cases.
Time's up, sir.
And the platenes, excuse me, the platenes and the costs. How many of these costs could have been eliminated?
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Conway.
Hi, my name is Bradley Conway. I'm from Manchester, and this is a fiery one, so. Nashua City Aldermen, we're here again to hold you all accountable for your inaction to stop the genocide in Gaza. More than a million people are being starved. Starvation is a form of torture. Citizens of Nashua are forced to pay for it, and you're doing nothing to stop it despite weeks of appeal. You have power, and you're not using it. You know as well as we do that your inaction is unleashing a suffering into this world that will endanger the lives of every resident of Nashua. Take a position, stand against cruelty. How many more residents will you ignore? How many does it take to pass a resolution? The world is truly becoming more of a nightmare every day. It feels like evil is boiling over everywhere, despite our best intentions to raise the alarm. I feel like my heart is being dragged behind a bus. Words are becoming meaningless. Our basic rights to free speech as Americans are being undermined because Americans are unable to exercise a shred of influence over their democratically elected leaders at any level. Federal, state, and local leaders continue to say that protesting genocide is antisemitic and appears to be on track to become illegal. Does anyone else feel like the criminalization of protest against an actual genocide makes literally everybody else feel unsafe? Suppression of speech and protest is not just happening on campuses. We all know it's happening here at City Hall in Nashua, too. I know I don't want to be here. I know that the Board would rather us all not show up, but since this issue is so relevant to the city and its residents, and because of the scale of the catastrophe being so unprecedented and unfathomable, we are compelled to show up yet again. I don't think for one second that you all think this is a complicated issue. I think you can't wait to hear the new disingenuous Israeli talking points being parroted by U. S. officials so you can throw up your hands and excuse yourselves from the conversation. I think you just don't want to be on record taking a stand one way or the other. Unfortunately for you, residents of Nashua know that you have taken a position, namely that you will not use your position to save lives or to stand up for your constituents in the face of extreme gaslighting. Please stop running from this and acknowledge that our federal leaders, including Maggie Hassan, Annie Custer, and Jean Shaheen, are behaving insidiously to undermine life and liberty around the globe. Please introduce our resolution in new business and bring it to a vote. Maybe it won't pass, but as our leaders, we want you to take a position on the issues that we've raised. If our resolution doesn't pass, please modify it.
Thirty seconds.
Another option is that you could make a verbal motion tonight to resolve that the City of Nashua calls for an immediate permanent ceasefire and put it to a vote, maybe call for the city to divest its funds from genocide. You have too much power to do nothing. Please use your position to show solidarity with Palestine and promise us in writing via your resolution process that you are committed to building a city and a future free from the lies and destruction necessitated by U. S. domestic and foreign policy. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board. I'm going to start over here tonight. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would just like to thank the principal and the staff of Bicentennial Elementary School. Last Friday, I was able to attend my very first Light Up the Night. My daughter is a third grader there, and she wanted to go. It was her first year at Bicentennial. The staff and the principal and everyone put on a great event. There were teachers dressed up as clowns, there were animals with balloons and face painting and a whole bunch of other stuff, and food trucks, which was great. So I want to express my appreciation to the entire staff at Bicentennial on for the kids. Want to bring everyone's attention that it is Mental Health Awareness Month, the month of May. Keep an eye out, I think it's the Fisher Cats and Anthem Blue Cross Bush Shield are having a special night that encourage everyone to wear blue, which is the mental health and autism and many other related color symbols for that particular. Lost my words. It didn't happen frequently. That particular.
Con?
Yeah, awareness, I guess, sorry. So moving on then. I hope everyone had a great Mother's Day, and also coming up, I hope everyone enjoys the unofficial start of summer and has a great Memorial Day. Thank you.
Alderman Guevea.
Thank you, Madam President. So I received an email earlier this week from a kid of a former Alderman member here in the City of Nashua, Charles Bachard. He was a native of Nashua. He passed a hundred and five on May third. Yeah, served two terms on the Board of Aldermen from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-four, served in the United States Army, the hundred and twenty-sixth Army Airways Communication System Quadrant from nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-six. I would like to send my deepest sympathy to the family.
Alderman Lopez.
So first, I want to comment on the Board of Education. I wanted to watch the meeting last night instead of the Ad Hoc Committee because I was bothered by discussions that have come up in past meetings about how the Aldermen are, you know, not taking education seriously, not supporting the Board of Education. There's this increasing divide, so we had brought it up in the J. S. S. B. C., and I thought we had done a good job of inviting them and engaging them and saying, well, come to the Ad Hoc Committee. This is what's going on citywide. These are things, you know, that are in context, but there's always ways to find support for the things that are important. And so I was looking for acknowledgement of that or maybe a pass on, and I, in my opinion, what was presented to the Board of Education was a very selective interpretation of the events at the Ad Hoc Committee, and I think it's important for this Board to watch those meetings periodically and see what is being said about this Board, because I don't think the characterizations are necessarily fair. I think some definitive actions are being justified by our responses and our efforts to attend to taxpayer needs, including a meeting where they attempted to set a date for voting to close Mount Pleasant, and then after all of their discussion realized that none of them could make it to the meeting that they were having. But they want to call the question, and they want to make that motion, and they want to attribute that to our decisions here, which is very obviously a school board decision and a matter of their priorities and their role to exercise. They questioned whether or not several of us who have run for election would actually make good on our agreements to support the Mount Pleasant community and Mount Pleasant. They haven't even made a request of us yet, and this came up at previous meetings, that they haven't asked us for anything, they haven't come up with a plan. The only action that's been taken on this issue at all is Alderman Dowd's proposal that we find unexpendable revenue to do a citywide evaluation of the school buildings so we could at least have an informed decision about what condition the buildings are in and what we could expect coming down the line before making decisions about one specific building. So I found the meeting frustrating, but I think it's important for everybody to watch it because a lot of these comments are being made about us. They challenged the mayor to come forward and speak to the people of Mount Pleasant about, you know, his support and what his plan is for that. So whether we want to or not, and whether it's a priority for us or not, it's coming, and we're going to have to make decisions about how to support one direction or another and how to connect with the Board of Education, because they clearly want to work more closely with us and are acting on their own regardless. With regards to the comments that were made tonight regarding the Palestine situation, I agree with the concerns that are being raised. I think there's support for it that's growing in the federal government, too. Recently, there were, President Biden asked to have a report prepared to Congress assuring Congress that all of our weapons were being used in ways that were consistent with our guidelines and with international law, and a number of federal agencies made official concern, expressed official concerns. So it is something that there's definitely a lot of area for concern with. Personally, I am not in favor of divesting from military supports here in Nashua because I believe Nashua citizens are working and doing their jobs because they're trying to pay their, trying to provide for their families, they have a strong sense of patriotism, and they don't, they're not doing this so that weapons can be made to kill people in Gaza. I think that's where we need to focus efforts on the federal level and political advocacy there. Regardless of whether I believe that, I see that people are still coming every week, and I'm listening. I'm frustrated by the Gaza situation myself. I think there is the practical reality of whether this Board is feeling like it is being engaged in a productive manner. I don't feel compelled to try to startle my fellow Board members or put them on the spot with an impromptu vote to soothe my conscience. If I put a resolution forward of any kind, it will go through the regular channels as required so that the other Aldermen can view that and see it, so that members of the public can see that as well and come and express their opinions. Because as much as there is an organized movement supporting Palestine's position and situation, there is definitely a lot of mixed feelings and other opinions that are present, too. And whether or not they're equally as informed as the people who are coming tonight, or whether or not they're as prepared or organized, they are still valid, and it is not my impression that my constituents have a uniform voice on any of these particular issues. Finally, I just wanted to comment, the motion, the item was tabled before I could say anything regarding it, but I appreciate Alderman Moran bringing up the presentation of a homeless shelter. I think that's important for us to view as a high priority in the city, because we are struggling with an increase and a surge in homelessness, and there are some environmental reasons that's happening. Part of it is because we're getting lots of people from other parts of the state that haven't been able to cultivate their own support networks. Part of it is because there is a substance use crisis, and there's a large number of housing programs and support programs in the city where people don't always succeed. But part of it is just because we don't have enough partners in the city to support each other and to work off of each other and to play. We need more, we need more shelters, and we need more entities that are willing to do that. We saw what happens when we only have one player addressing a need with stepping stones, and it was tragic, not only that that program and all of the Board members and their vision for what they could do for people in need collapsed, but it was terrible what happened to the people who were in the program. And ultimately, that became the city's problem anyway. The city still had to work with finding housing supports and connecting those people, and thankfully, the continuum of care was able to come together and at least provide options for those people to pursue. So I think that presentation, which came up at the Ad Hoc Meeting two weeks ago, and the future presentations by Public Health, will be very important to watch, and I encourage my fellow Aldermen to do so. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to our new CFO, tax collector, Don Enright. Conquered loss is our gain, for sure. Sorry about that. Anyway, she was named tonight, so congratulations to her. And also, I wanted to extend my congratulations to Tricia Kaufman, the brand-new principal at New Surles Elementary. Thanks.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to address a couple of things to the folks who showed up tonight. Thank you for coming. I do want to tell you that you're, at least in my opinion, welcome here. The mic is for anyone to address anything of concern, and that's its purpose. And so, thank you. I do want to say that I am concerned as well in regards to the, some of the actions going on with, in regards to the protests. I think that there are concerns there that we are quashing people's freedom of speech, and I think we need to be careful that we don't fall down a slippery slope of doing that. So I would hope that as these protests will continue, that, you know, we respect each other and we respect each other's right to protest and to say how we feel, because if we lose the First Amendment, then we lose all of them. So with that said, I want to move on to a different topic. I want to just congratulate CFO Griffin in his retirement. I wish him well. He has served the city tremendously. He has served the city tremendously. I think he started here in 2010, which would have been my second year on the Board of Aldermen, and his guidance has led us to us having, you know, a triple-A bond rating, to making sure that our budgets are carefully crafted, that our spending has been under control. So I just want to thank him for all of his leadership over the years, and you'll always have a welcome when you come here. So, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things tonight. I'd like to start by echoing Alderman Clemmons' comments in regard to public comment and the means that people choose to use that for. I agree wholeheartedly that the public comment period is for people to come and say what's on their mind. I know in the past in this chamber, there have been efforts brought up at times to limit what people can and can't use that time period for. And I had always been, as a citizen, opposed to those efforts, and I will continue to be opposed to those efforts, that that's the public's time, and I would never presume to ask somebody to not come before this board and speak their mind. Moving on from that, a couple of folks that I'd like to recognize throughout the city. Start with Nashville Fire Rescue. I was out of town over the weekend, and I was alerted to a fire in the housing complex over on Major Drive off of Burke Street. That's a really scary situation, given the age of those units and the proximity of them to each other. But fortunately, due to the professionalism of our fire department, that was contained to a single unit. It's my understanding, unfortunately, that the residents of that unit did lose a family pet, but fortunately, no human lives were lost, and it's my understanding that there were no major injuries. So big thanks to Nashville Fire Rescue for their continued efforts in helping keep the city safe. On a happier note, I'd like to recognize our energy manager, Doria Brown, who was recently named the 2024 Young Professional Energy Champion at last week's New Hampshire Energy Week Awards Ceremony. Ms. Brown has been doing incredible work for the city, as we just saw tonight, accepting the new energy rate for the coming years. It's... if I read this correctly, I believe she's the youngest energy manager in the state of New Hampshire. So I think it's really exciting for the City of Nashua to have a young professional like Ms. Brown doing such great work to, you know, help improve the lives of the residents of Nashua. And then finally, I would like to extend my thanks to Alderman Moran for extending the invitation to me a couple of weeks ago to attend a screening over at the Nashville Center for the Arts of The Fifty, which was a very eye-opening and sobering film documenting the rehabilitation of fifty California inmates in the California penal system who were selected to take part in a program that allowed them, upon release, to become substance use counselors. What a creative solution to a problem like prison overcrowding. And to be able to be present and to briefly hear one of those gentlemen actually speak in very sobering terms about his past and his experiences, it really was. It was an eye-opening experience. I really do appreciate Alderman Moran extending that invitation, and I think that all goes to show that, you know, that's a problem in a state as massive as California, but I don't think creative solutions are certainly limited to our neighbors out on the West Coast. And it really shows what could be done with a little bit of forward-thinking and creative mindset. That's all I've got tonight.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I got a few things, as always. I had a great spending cap joke to start, but Alderman Tebow went a different way, so I appreciate that. I do appreciate his comments tonight, and everybody's comments. I think there's a miss or myth or misconception out there that we... any of us would want to stop people from coming here and speaking, and maybe speaking for all of us, but I really don't think that's the case. I think people can come and speak and have their time and say whatever they want to say, and I think that's a good thing for us in Nashua. It's a good thing for the country, and whether I differ with anybody here, I think that's... I would say that I don't think anyone would try to stop that. So I'm not sure why that's out there, because I just don't think it's true. You know, another thing that I don't get to is, you know, I am... I've been very anti nonsensical right-to-know requests, because I think sometimes we get more than we should. I don't know why we couldn't... if something's in a public meeting on a PowerPoint, I'm not so sure why that was such a difficult get. So, you know, I... thank you for coming out today and speaking on that, because I don't understand why... if it was public, just email one of us. If we have it, just give it to them. I don't understand why we can't do that. Let's see. So one thing that was concerning tonight is the whole tabling of the proposal to look at the parking garages. And I, you know, applaud Alderman Kelly for... or Alderwoman Kelly for not tabling it and just saying that we should table it but not actually tabling it, because we had some aldermen and all the women who had their hands up, and I would have loved to hear them what they said. This went through two committees and got to us, and I think it was important enough to Director Fodo and her team that we should at least have a little conversation. We talked more about the tannery, which we all knew 100% was going to go through. We all want that. There was no doubt about that. But this, I thought we should have spent just a little more time. Maybe I would have went a different vote, and maybe I would have voted to table it as well. I just thought that when we table stuff, I think it's a tactic to stop people from going forward and having any more debate, and I think that's what we need to have here. That's why we're here. We need to debate issues and speak about stuff. And it was a close enough vote, eight to six, that we had almost 50/50% of people that wanted to go different ways. So I think it's important that we have those discussions. Just to say, I'm not copying Alderman Gavea. I did have this up. I, too, wanted to recognize, and I didn't know Alderman Bechar at all, but to see that he served us well in the '70s and he was 105, I'm guessing he was the longest living alderman at the time. I don't think anybody was over 105. Alderman Jettie's probably the next oldest living.
He wasn't 105 when he was an alderman. He died when he died.
Alderman Jettie, are you 100?
I think he may have been my postman at one time when I was a kid, and, you know, certainly he went to the same church as my grandparents, so I'm certain that they knew each other. They were... would have been around the same age. I just wanted to give condolences to his family and to recognize him. And lastly, this weekend, my daughter is graduating from college, and I just wanted to congratulate her, Libby. She's come a long way, graduating at the top of her biology department with the highest grade in biology. So I just wanted to recognize her. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I try never to criticize another board or organization, but much of what my colleague from Ward Four has said, I think we should be paying a little bit more attention to the Board of Ed. We don't tell them how to spend their budget. We just give them the bottom line. There's lots of noise going on that we're not giving them a seat at the table, but they did come and present. Why are they any different than the Nashville Fire Rescue or the Nashville PD or any other department that's not on that committee? They are no different. So why do they deserve a seat at the table more than anybody else? They were allowed to present. They were allowed to bring that. And the truth be told, their comments even here were, well, we can't make any decisions until you tell us what we can do. Well, no. The rule was, you come to us, tell us what your priorities and what your needs are, and they have not done that. They have failed to do that time and time again, and yet they want to say it's the Board of Aldermen. They want to tell the parents of Mount Pleasant that it's going to be closed because the Board of Aldermen won't give them $30 million yet. We really don't know that it's $30 million. It could be more. It could be less. Is the $30 million needed to be done all at once? We don't know, because they don't have a plan. They talk about it, the Board of Ed wanting to close Mount Pleasant and Amherst Street and then build a brand-new school on Sargent Ave Park. That ain't going to happen, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm only one voice here. I just... they've created this problem with Mount Pleasant by not funding it year after year after decade after decade. And then they want to turn around and say it's the Board of Aldermen's fault. Well, you know, look at yourselves. And I apologize for being so angry, but Mount Pleasant is very important to me, and I think that they have already decided this is what they're going to do, and now they're trying to deflect it from themselves and rather say it's the Board of Aldermen's fault. Well, it's not. It's your fault. And I've tried speaking candidly with, and I will say, the president, and based on the last meetings that I've heard, I truly feel like I've been given lip service, and I'm very upset by it. But I'm going to leave my comments there, and I apologize for my angry tone, but I am disgusted by it. And I do want to congratulate CFO Griffin on his retirement. I also want to congratulate Dawn Enright, who will be taking his place. She is very well-qualified, but she does have big shoes to fill, and I'm glad that CFO Griffin will not be leaving us completely. And thank you, Madam President.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the budget book. I'm looking forward to digging into it, and I happened to run into Megan Karen, and she was eating from the snack dispenser, and I told her she should go home and take a rest because these were done. So thank you to everybody and their hard work on that, and I know that we kick off the in-person meetings this Thursday, so I'm sure we'll have lots of fun with Budget Committee this year. I also wanted to point out just a couple of community events. I know this weekend is the Greek Food Festival, which I love, and also Powell's Cone to the Cop is on Saturday from 12 to 3 at Key Words, and that's one of my son's favorite events of the year.
Alda. I would also like to thank Alderman Moran for the invitation to the Fifty film showing at the Performing Arts Center. It was very well done. I thought... I was very impressed with it, the whole concept behind the Fifty and how it evolved, and it was really very good. So thank you for that.
And thank you, Alderman Senate.
Sure. I would also like to congratulate Doria Brown and all her successes since she's been with us. She's been a wonderful addition to the city, and I hope she continues to work for us. And that's all I have. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
As you can tell by the book on your desk, FY25 Budget Meeting starting Thursday, it's General Government, and I ask that the Budget Committee, as we go through these meetings, since they're so close together and we have such limited time between now and final approval, that you look at the section in the book before the meetings that we're going to have and come up with any questions you might have. You might also notice that if you got the budget agenda for this coming Thursday, it has letters from some of the smaller departments.
Most important.
What?
The smaller and most important.
You can tell that Legal was one of those. They are to overview their particular budgets in their... in the past, I don't know how many years I've been chair of budget, but usually, there's no questions for them. For instance, one's the Board of Aldermen. We know where that is, so... But if you do have questions with any of those departments that had the letter submitted, you can send them an email asking the question, but have the response go to Donna so she can send it to all the aldermen, so that everybody has the same answer. But you can see that most of the ones that have submitted the letters while being important are ones that we, you know, pretty much, there's not a lot that we have to say about their budgets, and the questions are usually pretty minimal, so... that's all I had to say on that.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I was going to move to adjourn, but I still have to answer.
Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs Committee, a very important committee, is meeting on May 20th, but we had to move our meeting to 7:30 to accommodate a meeting on debt service, so Alderman Dowd will bring my question about that to that. But May 20th, we'll be meeting with Human Affairs Committee.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. PDC was canceled this month to make room for budget. I believe June 24th or 25th will be joint with infrastructure, so we can also make room for budget. But with that, I was made aware of very important information. The Bruins won, and they moved on to the next game.
Information probably didn't come from...
Alderman Dowd.
Just one last thing. Our city clerk, Healy, is now the president of the city clerks and town clerks in the state of New Hampshire. His picture was in the paper, and congratulations on that.
Yes, seize power.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at 9:55 PM. Thank you, everyone.